So what do you say we go ahead and get this party started? So the first thing that we're going to do is we'll go ahead and call the meeting, MASC Board Meeting, to order on April 24th, 2020. And so the first thing that we're going to do is say the pledge. So everybody will stand up and we have the flag there. I pledge allegiance to
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation
Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas One state, under God, one indivisible. We did have one comment to the board, but it was not related to the agenda. And when you have a special meeting, the agenda, the comments have to relate to the meeting agenda. So just to let everybody know about that. At this point, we don't have any action items for the open meeting, but we're going to go ahead and go into, under the closed session, under the Texas Open Meetings Act. And then after we complete the closed session, we'll come back in and take any actions that we need to at that point.
Mr. Dossie?
Yes.
I believe the, I believe the interviews or the proposals need to be heard in open session.
Ah, okay. Okay, well, that's fine. So we'll, we'll crank it off there then. Who is first on the agenda?
Texas Association of School Boards, and I believe I see Butch Feltnor and Miriam Strauss there. And welcome, Tasby. We're excited to have you guys. And please proceed with your proposal for the superintendent search for Montgomery ISD.
Well, thank you. It's good to be with you this afternoon. And we appreciate the opportunity of being with you. I'm Butch Feltnor with Texas Association of School Boards. I've been with Tasby now over 13 years and conducted many, many superintendent searches. With me today is Dr. Marion Strauss. We both are consultants for executive search services for Tasby. And we both do superintendent searches full-time, all day, almost every day, believe it or not. And she's, Dr. Strauss is going to be giving you a little bit of information about what we do. And I'll be tying it up at the end and we can answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us and allowing us to present today. We know that this is a very important decision. You probably wish you weren't having to go through this, but it is, it is one of the most important things you will, you will do during your tenure on the board. With our searches, with Tasby, the board is in charge. We represent the school board, so it is your search. You're going to see all the applicants. We believe that's important. If you tell us to recommend who your top 10 or so are, we will be happy to do that. But we, we still believe that you should see all the applications that come in. You're going to select those for the interview. We're going to help you and guide you. And, and most importantly, every search is new with Tasby. While we do more searches than anyone in the state, every search that we do begins new, so that everyone has to apply. Again, we're going to represent you. We're your organization. And we have what we call boots on the ground. Every, every one of our divisions at Tasby will be involved. So you're going to get ESS, which is the search, which is us. And then our field service are the people, mostly retired superintendents, that go into every district on a once, about once a quarter, and visit with superintendents and aspiring superintendents regularly. So we know everyone out in the, in the state. But not only that, Butch is the past president of the National Association of Superintendent Searchers. So you will also have a national search automatically at no additional charge, because all of our sister organizations throughout the United States pick up our searches. So you will get the whole team. You will get Tasby Legal, our HR. We're going to provide you with the most recent and updated information as far as salaries they're concerned and benefits. And then, of course, Butch and I will both be working on your, on your search together. Hopefully, Dr. Smith will be working at that time, but right now he is unavailable. But he is your field service agent. We're going to check references, not only references that are listed, but we're going to really dig in and look at what their, what their past performances have been through our field service agents and every, our, our network of people. We will be able to bring you information that you probably can't get on your own or with anyone else. We're going to give you the information about every applicant that applies for your position, should you want to know that. We're going to engage your community. We have an online survey that we, that we launch immediately. And then also, if we're able at some point to come into the district in person, we will meet with any groups that you deem necessary or that you want us to meet with. So if there are special organizations or groups in your district, we'll be happy to sit down and talk to them. We also want to meet with your cabinet, your administrative team, your faculty and staffs, and again, the community at large and the community as far as those people that, that would want to be, your city leaders, any, any of the people that are important for us to talk to. We're going to put all of the information that we gather from the community and your faculty and staff in a report for you that you will receive prior to the application deadline. So you'll be able to see all of the comments that everyone has made. We ask very simple things when we do our survey. We ask what's going well in the district. We ask what the concerns are in the district. And then what it is that, that everyone would like to see as far as qualities and characteristics in the new superintendent. So you will receive all of those responses in a report. We're going to ask you to sign a confidentiality oath, because we know confidential searches are the best, the most successful searches. We do that because our applicants trust that the process is going to be confidential. Only one person in, in your applicant pool is going to, is going to be successful in, in being your next superintendent. Everyone else has to go back to their home district. So we know how important it is that, that the search is confidential. We will meet with you. If you select us, we'll have a planning meeting, get all the dates on your calendars and develop a timeline. And then we will start the survey, come into, into the district if we're able at that point and talk to people. We're then going to send you the applicants after the application deadline. We will send those to you electronically about a week before we come in and help you narrow them down to the people that you want to talk to. So again, you'll have about a week to go through those and come up with who you believe are your top candidates. Again, we also are able to bring you who we think, who we believe fit your qualifications and characteristics and, and recommend those to you, but we prefer that you see all of them. We will set up the initial interview. It is a very structured interview. We have a bank of questions that have gone through Tasby Legal. So there's about 98 questions for you to choose from, or you can develop your own questions. But we work with you through developing that. We contact all of the applicants. We make sure that everybody knows what, what step we're on. After you talk in your, after you interview your initial applicants, then we help you determine who your top three candidates are or four and, and set those interviews up, usually with the candidate and the spouse. So there's usually a social, so you get to meet all, both, all the family. And, and then go into a second interview, which is much more informal and more of a discussion rather than an interview, unlike the first round interview. So we're going to give you three hours of training for the meeting where we come in and help you narrow those down. We also have a transition session that is part of our search that the new superintendent and, and you, within the first 90 days, would sit down with one of our LTS trainers, either K Douglas or in more, one of those, and go through goal setting, a very important part of putting things in perspective as far as what you would like to see happen as a board in the first three months, the first six months, and then also talk about what you're going to evaluate them on after the first year. So doing that very early in the process allows for those bumps in the road to be eliminated and, and a much smoother transition. We have a guarantee, we're going to continue until you're satisfied. And if the superintendent leaves for any reason within the first two years, we're going to redo the, redo the search for travel and expenses, only no fee. Our price is based on your ADA, so it's competitive. Again, we are yours, your organization. You belong to Tasby, and that is why we are able to do our searches at a much less or reduced cost. It includes everything, our, all of our travel and expenses and the transition session. If there's any other training that you want after the transition session, of course, that can, that can be arranged as well. We have done, and I hope you've checked our references. We've just finished several searches in the area and also those that are about your size. We just finished Sealy for the second time. We've done it twice. Shert Sibyllo for the second time. Dripping Springs for the second time. So after their superintendents are there for seven or eight years and they move on or retire, those boards are having us back to do it again. And I think that speaks volumes for the service that we provide. Carrollton Farmer's Branch, Friendswood in your area, Bernie for the second time. So we feel like if you are able to check references, that our references would speak very highly. And I would say if they don't, then don't hire us. So with that, I think I'll turn it back over to Butch and let him finish and then we'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Strauss. Just to reiterate, we're the only search firm that you'll visit with today that have actual physical people walking in every school district in the state of Texas. No other search firm does that. And over those many times and years of doing that, we pick up a great deal of knowledge on every superintendent in the state as well as aspiring superintendents. We pick up information about how the district is faring, what's going on in the district, both positively and negatively, and information that we gather. And if should one of those superintendents supply for your district, we share that information with you. And we give you that and hope you can act on it or you can ignore it. It'd be up to you. But that's some of the services that we provide for you. Also that the, the fee that you pay us does not go into our pockets. It doesn't go help us buy or toward our new car or anything like that. It goes strictly back to Tasby and help public schools throughout the state of Texas as well as Montgomery ISD. So we feel like that's a value-added difference also. We are, there is, we are not doing any searches with districts your size, your size. You will have our 110% focused attention, because there are no other districts your size that we're working on. So you will be highly competitive with us and we will focus strictly upon what your needs are and how to provide your services to the best of our ability. And with that, Mr. President, we will turn it back to you if you have any questions of us.
Thank you, guys, for the presentation. I do have a few questions, and I'm sure the other board members do as well. And I would say, one question before I give it over to the other board members is, when you were saying confidential search, do you mean that basically we sign an NDA with you and, and basically we can't share that, that we're interviewing these particular candidates? Is that what you mean by the confidential search?
Yes, we, when a board signs a confidentiality agreement, it means they'll not disclose any candidates once they receive them to anybody. And it just creates a trust factor with us as the board and also the candidates, because most of the time, if we run open searches, which we rarely ever do, candidates withdraw, because they do not want their names out there and they want to keep harmony back in their home district. Because a lot of the folks that were interested are not looking for a job. We're wanting to go find the folks that are not necessarily trying to get out of town. We're looking for those that are aspiring and doing great in their current district, but also might be interested in visiting with you folks.
Thank you. I have some other questions, but I'm going to open it up to the other board members at this point. Go ahead, Adam.
Yes, thank you very much. You mentioned, well, first of all, I think, and I don't want to speak for the other board members. I'm pretty sure they'll agree with me. But I think community involvement is paramount in Montgomery ISD now. And I think the community involvement needs to go beyond an online survey. I think focus groups are important, getting business leaders, parents, religious leaders in the community together and get some feedback from them. And so in the proposal, it states, and you said if you're able to come out, but the proposal states that optional community involvement sessions can be scheduled. Is that an additional fee to the one listed in the proposal? I did not see that being listed as such.
No, that is not, oh, go ahead, Dr. Strauss.
No, that's fine. It is not an additional fee. Everything is included in our fee that is part of the search. The only reason I said if we're able is because if, if, if we're able to get out of the quarantine situation, we will be there in person for those sessions as well as all of the board meetings. So I am just, we're a little, this is very different for us. We're used to traveling every day during the week. And so we're, we're ready to get out and visit with people as well.
And if I might add to that, for example, in one of the districts that we did up in the Dallas area, we had 34 focus groups that we worked with. And so focus groups are certainly something that we're accustomed to. And it, as stated, it is part of our fee. There are no surprises with that.
Do you put together the focus groups yourselves or do you rely on the board to do so?
What we recommend is that we will send a recommendation to the district on groups that we've worked with in the past. And the district and the board can modify that however they so choose to do that. It would be strictly up to you. Any focus groups that we need to meet with, as Dr. Strauss alluded to, we're certainly able to do that. So we leave that pretty much up to the district, but we give them a guide of what we've done in the past.
And I think that's important, because every district is so different. And meeting with civic leaders and, and different organizations is really important in some districts. And then as you, as you go into other districts, they want us to, to focus on the public in general and have more focus sessions with people that just want to come. So we will do it whichever and however the board sees fit.
And not to beat a horse to death here, we're large enough that we can bring in other team members to assist us if we need to. And so we can spread out throughout the district to wherever you would like for us to go.
Questions from other board members? Matt, go ahead.
Dr. Strauss and Dr. Feltnor, what are your plans if we're having to do this via distance, right? How does that change your approach? Or does it?
Well, that's a good question. We have actually conducted three of these already with boards throughout the state. It's not ideal, because we prefer to be there in person, but under the circumstances, we can't be. But we have maintained the process throughout, and we've had some go through this virtually and have had a very successful search, very successful conclusion. So we will adapt however we have to, to meet the needs of not only the candidates, but the district and everyone. So we'll, we'll do whatever we can.
Even with the community sessions, we haven't, we haven't conducted any via Zoom at this point. But one of the departments that, as I talked about with Tasby, is our IT department. And I can see them getting involved and us actually doing a studio-type sessions with, with your community and with different groups and allowing people to log in. So it's, it, we're all going through this at the same time. It's very different for us.
Thank you. How, and this is just a naive question. How do we balance doing those things and community forums with the confidentiality? I know Mr. Simmons asked about that, but aren't those kind of both mutually exclusive?
Confidentiality is separate, because it only applies to the board, because you're the only ones that are going to be seeing the applicants. And so the confidentiality strictly encompasses the applicants and the board and no one else. So in the community sessions, we do not discuss applicants. Even if, even if someone's name is brought up, we ask them that we're not interested in names. We're only interested in characteristics and qualifications of candidates. And so we want to make sure that it's a, a level playing field, if you will. Does that make sense?
Another comment about that is, and I, and I, we don't know whether you'll have internal candidates, but we treat both internal and external the same. They, they fill out all the same documents required, that we require, and we treat the internal candidates the same. Now, usually, if we're in a community setting, those are the names that are going to come up. And as Butch said, we don't discuss anyone. We just talk about the qualifications and characteristics.
Thank you. I had another question. I think you were, you know, you know that we're talking to two other firms today. And so the question I have is, why should we choose you? So I know that you were kind of mentioning it a little bit earlier about being in the schools and everything, but if you could kind of expand on that, why should we choose you over the other firms?
Well, you're going to visit with some very good search firms, no doubt about that. We feel like that we're the best. We do more searches in the state of Texas than any other consultant or any other organization, simply because more Texas public school districts entrust us with their search more than anyone else. We do almost double to three times as many, simply because of that. We, at this point, are not focused on any search, but your search according to your size of your district. So that alludes up where there are other search firms you might be visiting with today that are already speaking to and working with school districts that are your size or larger. And so you would have our undivided attention in that respect. We feel like that we bring more to the table, since we, there's not anyone, both in-state or out-of-state superintendent that we cannot reach out to in contact. We have contacts spread out, not only in this state, but also throughout the United States. So we have my colleagues that are working, just like I do, Dr. Strauss, those daily. And so we pick up their information on a candidate. We have candidates frequently applying from out of state. And so we have great knowledge of all those candidates. So again, we feel like that we cover a broad spectrum of experience and we bring that, we share that experience and bring that experience to you as a board.
I think something else that's important is this is what we do full-time. We do not sell any other products. We're not going to come back to you and, and ask you to purchase anything else. This is what we do full-time. We're both retired or former administrators, so we know the business. You're going to have access to all of our legal, Tasby legal. So the contract negotiations, while I know that you will consult your, your attorney, we take care and we go through that process with you and, and the candidate. So we want to make sure, as you go through the interviews, that you're as close to understanding both the candidate and the board, what the salary and benefits is going to be, so that when it's time for us to get the contract during the 21 days, that we're very close and we can get that done at, with very, very little additional legal work. So I, I think that's another thing that, that we do very well. We, we try very hard to make sure that everyone's on the same page, so that when you do select your candidate, it goes very quickly and very easily.
Any other questions from the board? I see David, David talking. Ergel, did you have a question?
Yes, you, Mr. President, commented the other day that you thought that the Tasby people really, for the most part, and I'm putting words in your mouth, and I apologize for that, thought that the, the size of the placements in terms of number of students was relatively low relative to other placement services companies. It's, I mean, can we ask the, the, the people on the, on the service, on the phone here to comment on that, please?
Yeah, so just to paraphrase what David was saying. When I reviewed your, your proposal, it seemed that most of the schools that are districts that you guys help are kind of in that $1,000 to $4,000, $5,000, $1,000 kid range. And so, so that was really the comment there. It seemed like most of your experience is there. And so that's, if you want to comment on that.
Be happy to. You know that most of the school districts, in fact, the predominant sizes of school districts in the state of Texas are in that range. So we provide a service for every school district in the state of Texas, be it a very tiny school district who needs our service, as well as the very large school districts. You, as Dr. Strauss alluded to, we did Carrollton Farmer's Branch, which had 33,000 students. And so we, you know, our processes are same. The only difference is, is that we enlarge the process for where a district, the size of, for example, a Carrollton Farmer's Branch. So we have to provide, and we don't have to, but we do provide a service for every school district in the state despite their size. And there's, that's the only reason you'll see those numbers, like And there's, that's the only reason you'll see those numbers like they are.
Thank you. I think we have about one more minute with TASB before we have our next interview. Did anyone have any other questions that they wanted to ask? Okay.
We think, I just wanted to say, I think another piece that we may have not talked about is communication. And whoever you choose, they should be communicating with you as a board on a regular basis throughout the search. And with, with us, communicate with, we communicate with the board president, but we also send out a regular update every week on what the, where we are in the search, as well as what, how many applicants, what their experience level is. So that's just one more thing that I think is important and it will be important to you as a board. So thank you for having us.
Yeah. So thank you for, for giving your presentation today. It was very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you all, the board.
Appreciate it.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so Beau, are we, are they going to just, so I'm kind of popping on every now and then?
They, they are on hold, so I will go ahead and admit them back in.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Peter Flynn.
Hi. All right. So I see Peter Flynn and Rick Barry and Ms. Wellman all on the phone. Okay. Welcome to the MIST Board. Thank you guys for coming today and giving a presentation and telling us about your services. So if you want to just jump in, you guys have 30 minutes. And just, if you could, just make sure that you leave a little bit of time at the end so that we could ask you some other questions that we have.
Okay, I'll start out. Good afternoon and welcome to meeting all of you. We look forward to the opportunity to explain the process that we use in doing superintendent searches. And would tell you, we know you have a number of firms that were interested in working with you. And we're honored that you selected us for this interview. We're going to go through briefly the process that we have used for doing superintendent searches in Texas. We're the Hazard, Young and Atia team for Texas. And I'm sure you've read our proposal with the searches that we have done here in the last five or six years. First, we're going to introduce ourselves. My name is Rick Barry. I, for the last, we're going to do, very briefly do this. You have our resumes in your packet. The last 16 years since 2004, I've been a retired superintendent doing consulting all over Texas with some firms that do business with superintendents and school boards, one of those being Hazard, Young and Atia. Before that, from 1992 to 2004, I was superintendent of the Cypress Fairbank School District. That makes me the longest-serving superintendent in the history of, of the district. And prior to that, I was superintendent in the Arlington School District in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. And I'll let you read the rest of it. It's, it's too long to go over in the time we have. So I'll turn it over to, I believe, Nola is going to go next.
I am. Good afternoon. Thank you again for allowing us to be here today. I am retired after almost 11 years in the Eens School District. I retired in 2014, served there and loved my opportunity to be there. I've been consulting, doing superintendent searches, working with digital curriculum companies and a variety of other things since my retirement. We've had an opportunity to work together for the, for the whole time as the Texas team. Prior to 2004, when I was recruited, actually by Hazard, Young and Atia's process into Eens ISD, I worked in the Cherry Creek School District in Denver, Colorado, and was in Denver and in Colorado for 30 years. I had migrated to Colorado after one year of teaching in Texas, grew up, born and raised in Texas. So I came back home and had a great opportunity to do that. And you can read the rest of my, of my experiences also on my resume. Thank you again.
Good afternoon. I'm Peter Flynn and it's an honor to be here and have this opportunity with you today. I'll tell you a couple of things that aren't on my resume. I'm a husband. My wife and I have been married for almost 55 years. We have two children. We have three grandchildren. I was a superintendent for 34 years and in four different locations around the United States. And for the past eight years, working with eight mostly in Texas, finding the right superintendent. And we look forward to the conversation here today. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we've spent some time recently learning more about your school district. We've been reading your information off of your website, as well as other publicly available information. And one of the things that interested us was the fact that you do something in your mission statement that very few school districts do. You identified the results that you expect to get from your efforts as a, as a school board and a district. And that is empowering students to become eager lifelong learners. And we salute you for that. That's a great goal to have. Also, we've learned that as, as a board, in your vision, you have determined you want to become the premier school district in the state of Texas. That's also a very laudable goal and one that will require a lot of hard work and continual improvement and a team of eight that works together beautifully. So what we would like to do is help you and through this process as your partner, and we would look to you for guidance. We will work hard. We will provide you recommendations, but ultimately it will be your search and you will make all the decisions.
We are using the PowerPoint that we sent to you. And if you're following along on the PowerPoint, we're on slide number five now. And I'm just going to tell you a little bit about Hazard, Young, Atia and Associates. It's been in business for a little over 30 years and done about 1,400 searches throughout the United States, including working with school districts that are large districts and urban districts and smaller districts and districts with diversity, racially, ethnic and socioeconomic diversity. And our nationwide associates help us to actively recruit the best candidates that there are possible. And not only do all our searches have what we call executive oversight, but our firm also has professionally staffed offices and a full-time employed staff. And our process that we use is survey-based. And we'll explain a little bit more about each of those as we go along. Now on slide number six, a very brief overview of the, the search process. There are four phases to the process. The engage phase, the recruit phase, selection and transition. And now on slide seven, we'll tell you a little bit about, we'll start telling you a little bit about each phase. First of all, the key component to the engage phase, which is kind of a labor-intensive phase, is that we would have a planning meeting with you to plan out the entire search, every aspect of it. I put it on your calendar, put it on our calendar, so that it's all down and understood by the board the way you want it to happen. It would be a customized approach. Then the board and stakeholder input takes place. We start the engagement and we do that right away. The day after we have the planning meeting, we put up the, the survey on your website so that your community could access that survey. It's a research-based survey. You receive a white paper, as we call it, based upon 25 years of research on effective superintendents. That's in your packet. And those characteristics of effective superintendents are in that survey that we use. In addition to that, there's a, a component that has to do with the aspects of the district which might need some attention and those strengths in the district. All that information is compiled, the survey information, along with meetings that we would have with people in, in your school district. We do listening sessions and in a district about your size and complexity, we would do 15 to 20 meetings, including one-on-one meetings with each member of the board. And we'd also talk with Dr. Reese in the process, if that's okay with you. And we would probably be using the Zoom webinar approach as well. Then based upon all that information, we pull that together, what we call a leadership profile. And that gives you the desired characteristics drafted. And then you decide which ones are most mission-critical for your district at this point in its, in its history. I might add that the qualifications that you outlined in your RFP were very interesting and would be a great starting point for talking about the qualifications of your next superintendent. And to see if there's anything that other stakeholders and members of your staff might want to add to that. So then we bring that leadership profile to you and you would edit, amend it, approve it. And then that would help us prepare for the recruitment strategy, including any publicity. Then start looking for people who could provide evidence of a track record and skills to match that profile. Next on slide eight, we talk about the recruitment phase. On that slide, we talk about planning that, but then actually going out and talking to people using our network of well over 100 associates, people just like us, who are all over the country, which gives you the benefit of a national reach. And we are very proactive in how we go about this. We should point out that in all the searches that we've done in Texas, all but one had somebody that was eventually hired, who was not originally an applicant for the job, but was recruited by our team. And so we would review the applications, we would talk to people, we would make sure that they provide evidence that they can meet and perform effectively these characteristics that you've identified. We review those submitted applications, we conduct the screening interviews, we check all the references, both formal and confidential, and bring that forward. Now, Noah's going to talk a little bit about the select phase.
Select phase is the third component of our process. And this is where we bring forward the slate that we vetted for you and that we have interviewed ourselves and we believe matched best with the leadership profile and the desired characteristics of the board. And so though, after we've checked references and we've checked, looked at our confidential network and tried to gain as much reliable information on that candidate, we bring that slate forward to you. We will bring, we will have a, an interview workshop to help you with best strategies for interviewing. We will even work to create the script for you with the questions. That'll be a time that we'll want to know what questions do you want to ask? And we'll put that into script form for you. We will debrief with you after each round of interviews. We'll have the first slate. And then we kind of turn it around in terms of your thinking to think about of those, of that slate, which ones are you no longer interested in pursuing? So that you can begin eliminating, rather than having to think we've got to, to select, it's really which ones are you not interested in moving forward? And then you talk about the best match for your school district. We will debrief with you and then we will do the deep background check and prepare for the possible site visit. Once you have resulted in the final one that you are pursuing, then our company will help with that due diligence and provide support for you. In the transition phase, this is where we would help you negotiate the contract. And part of that is to give you some comparisons of contracts of other districts, like districts similar to yours, but also in the geographic region in which you are, are in. We would help you with a success plan, an entry plan for the superintendent. And then if you choose, you can, we can work with you on goal-setting for the first 90 days and first year and the evaluation components, perhaps the metrics for that. We can talk about those services at a later time. The next slide is about communication, a key component of our process. And that, first of all, we have a portal that you will have access to with all of the information that we create for you. And that'll be at your fingertips. You can sign on. The applications will be there. Everything that you would need is in that portal. Sample questions for interviewing that you can use as we begin creating that script for you and many more resources for you. We will provide updates to the board. We'll, in our planning meeting, we want to get to know you. And part of that is finding out your communication styles and how you prefer that we would communicate with you. We would work with your communications department and, and create a superintendent page and on your district website and create that presence. That's where the survey would be located. On the front page of your webs, district website, there'd be a button labeled superintendent search. And we would help you through the communications process with the media, as well as internal processes as well. Any, the, the last component is, the last slide that I want to share with you is slide number 12, which just gives you the front page of that portal, but shows you the different sections that would be available to you. Communications is an extremely important component of our process. Next, I think Rick will talk to you about our commitment.
Well, I, I think I said it earlier, but we want to emphasize our commitment is to customize the search to what you want as a school board for your school district. That you look for the very best superintendent that you can find for the current situation, your current challenges and strengths, as, as well as those that you see in the future. Again, that means that we do the work and you make the decisions. Every search that we have done as a team has been customized to that district based on the feedback we got from the school board. I think Peter's going to talk a little bit about a potential calendar that we've worked.
Yeah. So what we've sent to you, you should have this not only in the PowerPoint, but in a single page. It should have been sent to you and it's a possible calendar. And we just did this to kind of demonstrate the, the different segments of time throughout the search and how long it takes to do all these things. But we also had in mind that you had a desire to have somebody appointed by the first of August. And we came close. And you'll see that all of this is predicated on an August 3 hire date, appointment date. And that assumes then that you'd make a decision fairly soon as to which search firm you want to work with. And as soon as next week, we could begin the planning process with a planning meeting with the board. And then as soon as that planning meeting is finished, and by the way, during, God bless you, during that planning meeting, there is, every aspect of the search is talked about and calendarized, put on your calendar and, and made sure that what happens fits your calendar. The online survey, a research-based survey is put online as soon after as possible and usually stays up for about 10 days. Advertising begins right away. Our website gets about 100 hits a day because we list all the superintendent search firms, positions throughout the, the country on our website. So the advertising starts right away. Then we have these meetings. Then we have these meetings, one-on-one with each member of the board, as we said. And then with groups that you tell us we should talk with or individuals. Then we come, pull together all the information from the survey and from the conversations and the listening sessions that we have, bring it back to you for a profile that's drafted and then you decide on what that profile should look like. Based upon that, we start the recruitment. And then that gives us about five or six weeks to do recruitment and screening of the applicants. Bring that back to you in, in June. And then initial interviews, we meet with you after those interviews. And then comes back to the final, our second round of interviews. And we think that it all can be done, as we said, with an announcement of a lone finalist by July 13th. And we can talk more about that later. I'm rushing a little bit because I know we're, we're running out of time and we want to give you time to ask us questions. So that's where I'll leave it with the, did you want to add something, Noah?
No, I was just going to go on since we're running short on time. But to share on the next page, the superintendent searches that we and it's the, us three have participated in. I will say the first two, I was not, I was still working. And when I retired in 2014, I joined the team. The rest of the, the searches there, the three of us have done together. And so we have worked well together and we know how to work and communicate as a team. Peter, I'll throw it back to you.
Okay, well, this is our guarantee. And number one is we'll work with you until you're satisfied. Number two, we'll reconduct the search with only the cost of expenses. If the person leaves within the first two years, we will keep hands off anybody that comes to you from, with, through our services for three years at least. We'll point out that all the people that are listed on, on Noah's list there are still working. With one exception, the Houston search man left to go to New York City. I don't know why he would do that, but anyway. So then, and we'll also match the price of any competitor, provided they're doing the same level of service as we are.
Okay, so we're ready for any questions or comments that you have. If I could have the opportunity when you finish this part to make one closing statement.
Absolutely. So I, I do have some questions for you, but I was going to open it up for the, the other board members to ask any questions that they may have.
Thank you, Mr. Dossi. My question is for Mr. Flynn, Dr. Flynn.
Yes, sir.
So you mentioned about the August 1st timeline. Are we, is that fast or is that an average length of time? Are we pushing it? Because for me, and I think a majority of the board shouldn't say that. For me, the better issue is to get the right person in. And if it happens to be August 1st, then great. If not, so what? Are we pushing it or not?
It's a, it's a little fast. We like to take our time doing recruitment because as we pointed out, all but one person of the 10 that are listed on that slide before didn't originally apply for the job. We reached out to people and we asked, we asked people, can you do this work that they're asking for at Montgomery ISD? Secondly, do you have evidence that you can do it? And can you show us that evidence? And thirdly, we talked to people that are familiar with that person's work and asked them, did this person really do that work or were they riding the crest of somebody else's wave? So yes, it takes time to do all that and to be careful about that. And we always like to have a little leeway so that we, we can really vet people and find out about them.
Thank you. And Mr. Dawson, the only other question I have is how does the coronavirus pandemic that throw y'all for a loop? Or are y'all able to work with all that?
Well, we, we will use Zoom. We're comfortable with that if that is your preference and we're open to other possibilities. I will say that we would like to get back to the in-person part where we could do you, we could do interviews in person as soon as possible. But you know, it is what it is and we're prepared to do it ever how it needs to be done. I will say that one thing, we will save you a little bit of money in that I live in Montgomery County, about 20 minutes from your district and Peter and Noah will stay at my house if there's any overnight stay.
He has a good cook at the house.
Gary, I think you had a question.
Sir, Mr. Barry, I think you covered a little bit of that. I was going to ask what y'all expected your consultant travel expenses to be in a ballpark. You know, you covered that with yours, but.
Mine, and there, there, any overnight stays will, will be zero stayed at my house, but they will have some flight expenses. And I think right now they'd be pretty cheap with airlines.
I think that, and initially I think our first phase would be Zoom. But you do have some advantage if we can get back to at least some face-to-face in the final stages.
That'll be up to you. You know, we'll see what the situation is. And then again, you make the decisions about these things.
Thank you.
Trey, did you have a question from earlier?
It was similar to Matt's and I'll just kind of, that one is, in, in the timeline, being realistic or not, what is the typical timeline, what would be ideal?
Well, it's maybe three to four weeks longer, but we've, we've done shorter ones. And we can do the work, but the, the time that's more than adequate is, is about three to four months to, to get the job done.
Weeks, you mean weeks?
No, the whole, the whole.
Oh, you're talking about the whole process, yes, the whole process.
The whole process.
Yeah.
My question for you guys is, and I'm asking this of all the, the search firms that we're talking to, is that you know that we're interviewing other search firms? And I would like to hear what you guys think differentiates you from the others. Why should we choose you? I know that's probably, Mr. Barry, your closing statement, but, but that's what I would like to know. In a nutshell, why should we choose you?
Okay, yes, that, that is my closing statement there. There are just a few reasons that we think you should, you should choose us. One is you'll see our references from the school districts that we have done searches for in Texas. And on that list is the name of the board president at the time and their cell phone number. We would urge you to contact them. Every single one of those folks and, and all of the board members, they were all unanimous votes, by the way. Every single one of those board presidents said, give them my cell phone, I'll be happy to be a reference for you. So if you have time, we would urge you to make some contacts with those people. The other thing is we will be well-informed, we're quick learners and we are excellent listeners throughout this process. We work hard, we think we work harder than anybody else. You have our attention. And in fact, the other thing I would say as a response to that is we are not doing any other searches right now. And we like it that way. We like to do one at a time. We're not trying to do all the searches in Texas. And you'll see that, that sets us apart, we think, from most of the firms in that. Our concentration, our attention will be totally for this search devoted to you.
If I could jump in for a moment, I served as an interim in another school district last fall while they were doing a search. And what I noted is that we as a team, the three of us, did a lot more work for the board behind the scenes, meaning we did a lot of talking with candidates, screening candidates for them. And, and I felt like I was proud of the work that we do for, on behalf of the board in terms of getting the slate vetted and screened and also the communications with the community and making sure that the communications is lined up and well done. And I also think that the community sessions where we visit with people that you've selected is of high quality as well. So I say those things having been recently in, in another situation.
That's all of my closing statement. You asked a question for everything I had to say unless Peter and Noah have anything else or you have other questions.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, well, I thank you guys for your presentation today. It was really good and I, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Amy, are you ready to bring in the next search firm?
And do we have everybody dropped off that needed to be?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, guys. My name's Jim Dossi and thank you for coming to the MISD board meeting. I assume that Mr. Thompson, you're not actually at the lake with some, with some sailboats behind you. But, but anyways, we appreciate you coming to our, our board meeting. And, and so what I'd ask is that you try to keep the presentation to 30 minutes and then make sure that you leave us time at the end to ask you some questions.
Well, good afternoon, President Dossi and members of the board. Thank you very much for giving us an opportunity to visit with you about this very important decision that the board has to make in the next couple of months. And Mr. President, probably like all of you, in the last six weeks, I have been involved in a lot more Zoom meetings than I thought I would ever be involved in. And so that background is my wishful thinking Zoom background. That is the coast of Maine and that's where I would love to be this summer, but I don't know that it's going to work out. So, but, but at least it's a virtual presence, if not a real presence. Very briefly, by introduction, I'm David Thompson. I will let Dr. Mike Moses introduce himself in just a moment. I'm an attorney in private practice and our law firm has the privilege of working with Montgomery ISD from time to time on various legal issues. I think you know my partner, Philip Frazzenit, who has worked with you from time to time. And we very much appreciate the ability to assist the district. Dr. Moses and I started, we've been personal friends for Mike, I guess 30 years or more, but maybe going on 40 now. But when Mike retired as, or left, not retired, but when he left as Commissioner of Education, he and I began working with a select number of districts each year to assist boards with their superintendent searches. We typically assist with four to seven districts a year and it's just very personal. If, if we work with the district, the people you'll see are Mike and I. I'm, I'm committed, our firm is committed to working with public school districts in Texas. That's our background, that's who we are. Tamara and I have two daughters, they're both public school teachers, so we're all committed. I'll let Mike introduce himself. I will tell you one thing about Mike that he won't tell you himself. Texas Monthly described Mike Moses as the best appointment that Governor Bush made during his service as governor. So with that, Mike, I'll pass it to you and let you introduce yourself briefly.
Well, thank you, David. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board. We appreciate and are honored to be asked to talk to you. It is a little different way, I know, of communication, but we were, again, very honored. I've had the blessing of working with David, as he said, for almost 20 years doing searches in Texas. I did have the pleasure of working as superintendent for Texas school districts, including Lubbock and Dallas, and served as Commissioner of Education for almost five years. Also served as Deputy Chancellor of the Texas Tech University System. We, as David said, we've, we've been lucky to work with some really top-tier districts in Texas and we certainly consider Montgomery ISD to be one of those districts. Congratulations to you and the trustees for the outstanding record, the outstanding academic record. And that has been achieved there. I would also want to congratulate Dr. Reese on his new appointment. And we'd look forward to working with you if we were fortunate enough to be asked to do so. David, you want to say anything else before we kind of walk through?
Right up front, one, one option we will give the board, it's, it's obviously your choice, but in our proposal, which I believe you've all received, Mike and I typically, when we're doing a search, we devote at least a day, day and a half to some very intensive work in a community gathering input that the board can consider as you go through your search process. We meet in small groups, we call them focus groups with identified community leaders, typically teachers, administrators, parents, taxpayers, other elected officials, individuals that the board regards as opinion leaders and shapers in your community. That's very intense kind of hands-on. We collect a lot of information that, that boards hopefully, and we usually hear they find very useful. Obviously, in our current situation with social distancing, distancing and limitations in-person meetings, it may not be possible to do that. So Mike and I discussed that we could use an online process to get some information for the board from your community as part of just input as you go through the process. But if we did that instead of the intense in-person process, it, it would make a difference frankly on our time and how long, how much time we would actually physically be in the district. So if we did not do the focus groups and do the in-person, if we only did the online gathering of information at the board's option, if, if you wanted to go that route, we would lower our fee from 18,000 to 15,000. So we've discussed that, we're in kind of an unusual setting right now. We don't know what the next six weeks or so is going to look like, but, but we won't put that proposal out there right up front. So just very briefly, again, Mike and I work with a very select group of districts each year. We try to limit the number of communities that we work with so that districts really do get personalized attention from us. And we do want to describe to you, we've recently finished working with Belton ISD, College Station ISD. We're currently in the later stages of working with Lake Travis ISD, La Porte ISD, Texas City ISD and the Region Seven Service Center to assist them. And that one's an unusual one because the commissioner and TEA are also somewhat involved in the selection process. We believe those searches are far enough along, they frankly got delayed a little bit because of the COVID-19 shutdowns, but believe we will wrap them up in a way so that it does not interfere with us being able to devote the attention to Montgomery ISD that you need and deserve. Mike, anything you want to add there or do we want to talk about timeline?
I think we're ready to move on since I want to be respectful of our time and leave time for questions. Mr. President, members, I think David's already touched on the fact that we are the, we are the principals. We don't delegate this to anyone else. David and I are the two people that would work with you and work with the district on the search. You have the proposal, we obviously are not going to read that to you. We're proud of the districts we've worked with, those are in the back of the proposal. You can see the districts that we have been able to and have been honored to, to get to work with. And we're proud of those. I, I hope each one of you received the timeline. We went ahead and just took the liberty of looking at something that might help you achieve the goal of having a superintendent in place by the time your students and teachers return in August. I suspect that would be your goal. And so we just took a look at a timeline that might help us meet that objective. It says suggested at the top. Again, I hope each one of you saw it, but it, it kind of. Again, I hope each one of you saw it, but it kind of takes you through the steps that we might need to take or that we would need to take to get there, culminating with someone assuming the position on August 3rd, which is the first Monday in August. I'll kind of work backwards for just a minute on that timeline. State law requires a 21-day waiting period from the time you name a lone finalist to sign a contract. And so we kind of backed up with the idea that that would all be approved by July the 16th, meaning you would need to have named a finalist by June 25th. In order to do that, we kind of backed up. Again, you would need to be interviewing by the first or by the week of June 8th. June 8th through the 13th could be a first round of interviews. June 15th through the 19th, the second round. We recommend two rounds of interviews, a second round usually with only two candidates and perhaps their spouse, but we can talk about that a little bit more if you'd like to. June 22nd through the 23rd, kind of a quick bit of background checks there. Any district visits you might want to do. We do a financial background check. We assist the district in a criminal background check. Make sure that the search is absolutely pristine. We want the candidate to be pristine. David and I have never been embarrassed in the work that we've done with boards and we certainly don't want to be and don't intend to be if we were asked to work with Montgomery Board. So we'd want the vetting and the reference checking to be thorough and we'd work with you to make sure that trustees also had the opportunity to talk to references, the same people that David and I talked to. We do talk to references that are not on the reference list. David and I are blessed, enjoy a pretty robust network of trusted professionals in Texas. So we talk to a lot of those people and we talk to people about the quality of work that individuals are doing in their districts or previous districts. We also don't just look at the previous service. We look back two or three jobs. We like to see what is the career path? What is the track record? Is it a track record of success as we talk with candidates? Back to the timeline for just a minute. If we were, if the Board were interviewing by the second week in June, we would need to close the search about June the 1st and be meeting with you around June 1st or June 2nd. Again, we would start advertising the search if selected next week. We would get busy on that probably as early as you would authorize someone to assist you with the search. And we would also be happy to do a follow-up conversation with the Board about priorities and so forth. But that timeline gives you an idea about how we might proceed. David and I handle advertising. We handle recruiting. We don't just wait for people to apply. We will recruit top professionals in public education. We also, if the Board wishes, we will also entertain candidates that are non-traditional candidates as well. We've assisted one district in the hiring of an individual who was a non-traditional candidate. David's already talked to you a little bit about focus groups and how we think we can maybe do some online work to get some feedback from your community that might be of assistance to you. We work with you so that you see the names of every single individual that applies for the position. When we do meet with the Board to select individuals to interview, we don't just share friends and family, as David says. We share the names of every person that established their candidacy and then we have a process to help you work to get to a number of probably five to six people that you would like to interview. We will set those interviews up. We'll call those individuals. We'll have them there at the time you designate to conduct those interviews. We generally recommend that those interviews be over a two-day or three-day period, not spaced out. We interview one on Monday, a couple on Tuesday, one on Thursday, one on Friday. We think it's better to do that in a pretty collapsed process so that you can get comparative information and it's pretty easy to think about who's established a strong candidacy for you. We'll also set up the site visits. If you'd like to visit the district of a successful candidate, our finding is that more and more people use the internet. It's, they get a lot of information off the internet, but we'll help you in any way that you would like. Again, we do background checks, reference checks. David will also, has been kind enough to work with districts and assist them in the preparation of a contract. If you would like that assistance, that comes with our service. Our fee is guaranteed. If there, we've never had this happen, but if we had someone leave after a year, we would do a search for free for you. Again, we've never had that happen. If we had someone leave in two years, we'd do one for half fee. Again, we've never had that happen. We've been pretty lucky in the people that the Board has selected, which we've worked with, generally have had very good tenures in the districts that they've worked. One thing I would say, Mr. President, you and trustees maybe think about, this is a fairly aggressive timeline. It's a three-month timeline. We normally do these searches over four or five months. It can be done and done successfully. One of the things I would suggest the Board might want to think about is the possibility of some temporary housing or relocation expense because we're probably, in my opinion, however you go about your search, to get someone named by, under contract by mid-July can be done, but it leaves very little time for someone to relocate. And I think some temporary housing may be in order. So I would, I would suggest the Board might want to think about that. Certainly not required, but it might make the transition much easier, much more welcome for a quality candidate, a quality superintendent that you would want to have in place by the first of August. David, I'll stop there. If I've left off anything, you can add that and then we'll have time for questions.
Thanks, Mike. Just a couple of quick points to go back to the timeline. The timeline we provided you, we're not trying to lock you into those dates, but we do want you to see what a reasonably aggressive timeline looks like. Obviously, the dates would be adjusted and would need to be adjusted to meet the needs of the Board because we believe it's very important at some key stages that all seven members of the Board are able to participate. So getting dates on your calendars is going to be an important early action to take with regard to establishing a timeline. Mike's already talked about our process. It's probably somewhat similar to many people that you may talk to. I will tell you, when Mike and I started doing this 20 years ago, we want to make clear that our client is the Board. It is not the candidates. It is the Board. And so from the very beginning, we took the position that we're not there just to show you our six favorites or, as Mike and I say, friends and family. The Board needs to be able to see all of the individuals who express an interest in your position and we have a process to work with you to narrow that down appropriately to those that you would interview and put you in a position to make hopefully a very informed and good hiring decision. With regard to the contract, again, if you want to use someone else, that's always the Board's prerogative. If you want us to assist with the development of the contract, that is included in our fee and we would do that as part of our engagement. And we do have a process to try to identify some of the key terms before you actually identify a person in public as your finalist. We think it actually makes it flow better to get to a good decision. With regard to our arrangements with the Board and with the candidates, we do not bill you incrementally. You won't get a bill upfront. You won't get a bill at periodic points throughout the search. You'll get one bill at the end when you are finished and when you are happy. That will include our fee and our expenses, which will be minimal in this case, and it will also include any candidate expenses. The way we handle this to try to ensure confidentiality, and we're trying to be confidential, not to be secretive for the sake of secretiveness, but to put the Board in a position to look at the best group of individuals and consider the strongest group of candidates. But we, our law firm, we will reimburse the candidates and then we will include the reimbursement expenses for candidate one, candidate two, candidate three of our final bill that we submit to the district. But you will literally never clear a receipt through your business office with an individual's name on it. And again, we think that's just helpful in terms of maintaining the appropriate legal confidentiality around the search to, again, make it a productive search for you. And so we, there are more things Mike and I could tell you about our process, but in the interest of time, we'll stop there, Mr. President, and respond to any questions that the Board might have.
Well, thank you, guys, for the presentation. I'm going to open it up to the Board. See if you guys have any questions. I do have some questions as well. I'll start. The, one of the things that I'm asking all of the search firms, and I know you know that we're talking to a couple of different ones today, is what differentiates you from the others? What would you say that we need to know? Why should we hire you?
Mike, do you want to respond first?
Mr. President, the other firms that you're talking to are great people. In fact, we're all friends, I think. We applaud the work that others do. David and I are a little different in this way. David's obviously an attorney. We don't know, I don't know very many firms that have an attorney that work to make sure the Board is represented. I'm a former school superintendent administrator. I think that makes us unique as a payer, that we, we're not former, both former educators and obviously I'm not an attorney, but I think it's an interesting ingredient that we bring to the table. We have great respect for our other colleagues in this area. But again, David represents a lot of school districts and does a lot of legal work and I've been blessed to get to do a lot of educational work with a lot of good educators, great school executives across Texas. So I think that makes us a little bit unusual.
And if I could just add very quickly, as Mike said, we have the utmost respect for the other folks you're talking to. They're not only personal friends, but they're professional colleagues that we've known for many years and we know whoever the Board selects, you'll wind up with a good process and I'm sure get to a good conclusion. Mike and I have a very robust network. I think our knowledge of individuals in Texas, we will put that up against anybody, anywhere. And I will say this with no false modesty. We will get our phone calls turned. If we contact individuals, we'll hear back from them. We'll hear back from them properly. I think the way we handle the billing arrangements, I think, is maybe a little bit different than perhaps some people handle. The fact that we actually will include developing the contract and getting you to the finish line with that as part of our process, I think is a little different than some others. But, you know, ultimately, it's about personal relationships and Mike and I enjoy working with each other and we enjoy working with educators all over Texas. And then the last comment, I think if you look at the districts that we work with, you will see we have a lot of experience with districts that have similarity to Montgomery ISD.
Yes, go ahead, Adam.
Yes, you have mentioned several times the network that you enjoy, you know, reaching out to people that might not reach out to you to try to broaden your pool. What is, to that end, what's your policy on non-solicitation of a selected candidate? If you present someone to MISD, we name that individual as a finalist and then ultimately superintendent. Is there a waiting period before you'll reach out to him or her about the next job down the road?
Mike, why don't you respond?
Yeah, we, we generally, we tell, we won't talk to them for five years. I said we'll talk to them. We will not recruit them. We will not ask them to look at anything else. We've not had that happen. We, in fact, we've told some people when they contacted us, we will not recruit you. That's between you and your Board of Presidents. You better have a good talk with them. And that's only happened one or two times. Generally, you know, if things work well, a seven-to-10-year tenure is a good tenure. If it happens to be longer than that, then great. That means great service is being rendered. But we are, David and I subscribe to the golden rule and we want to treat everybody the way we want to be treated. And we just don't do that. We won't, and I don't even know, again, if it, if five years, would we talk to anybody? But that's, that's the minimum we'd talk to anybody about.
And I do want to say legally, obviously, we cannot prohibit someone who has an interest in a job from stepping forward themselves and applying or expressing an interest in it. But as Mike said, we honor the relationships. Our goal is to help boards and candidates get into strong mutually great relationships where people don't want to leave. And so that's the real objective. And as Mike said, we will not actively recruit individuals.
We've actually worked with candidates and boards to create handcuffs to keep them together for longer periods of time. So, and sometimes that occurs well into the tenure.
Could I ask, do you have any plans for a transition period after this superintendent comes in?
We don't include it in our proposal, but we can provide kind of post-search. Mike, I occasionally do Board training. Mike does team of eight training for districts all over Texas. And so we have had districts that have wanted us. And when I say us, it's not really me, it's really Mike to kind of mentor, if you will, stay connected and work both with the superintendent, but sometimes with the team of eight to make sure that the transition is a positive, it's a positive transition.
And if the Board, if the Board wants some goal-setting with a new superintendent, sometimes we'll do that, but we might also refer you to someone else that we think might, depending on what your needs are, we might help you. We've helped districts find some people to work with them, help facilitate some goal-setting too. But to the extent that we can be helpful to make the transition go well, we will do that. And certainly, we're not just going to check out as soon as you name someone. We're going to help get the, get that person started and hopefully have a really good transition for you.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Dossie, may I ask one question?
Yeah, please. Go ahead.
Thank you both. Would you clarify for me? I think you spoke about community involvement. What does that look like exactly? Are you going to have like a, is your package including like a forum for the candidate and the interview, stuff like that? Could you clarify that for me? And also, how does that balance with the confidential nature that you are talking about?
Normally, what we do while we're in the recruiting phase is have meetings in the district with a broad group, typically any 60 to 70 community leaders that represent a broad spectrum of your community. Again, teachers, administrators, parents, taxpayers, business people, other elected officials. We collect information. We organize it. We provide it to the Board for the Board to use. As you kind of think about candidates, you think about what your community has said is important. Frankly, we usually don't hear anything that is a complete surprise to the Board because you represent your community and I suspect what we hear are probably things that you're going to know, but it's important to make the community feel like they had some say in the process, not in the selection, but in the process. That may not be possible right now, just given some of the restrictions on in-person meetings and things of that nature. So Mike and I do work with districts to gather that kind of feedback through online questionnaires that people in the community can submit their opinions and their thoughts that will help the Board, again, feel like you got some input from your community and feel like people had some say. We do not involve the community with candidates before the Board names a finalist. And remember, this is a two-stage process. It's kind of like the announcement of the engagement precedes the marriage ceremony. You will announce somebody as your finalist and then at least 21 days has to run before you can actually employ them as your superintendent. During that 21-day period, it is common for the During that 21-day period, it is common for individual, for the individual to be in the district on multiple occasions, for people in the community to have an opportunity to, to meet them, to talk with them, to get to know a little bit about them. And, and again, right now, we just don't know what that's gonna look like over the next month to two months in terms of the ability to kind of have those meetings. But we'll help you plan those kinds of things to the extent that we're all able to do that.
Trey, did you have a question?
Yes. Dr. Moses, you'd mentioned about the aggressive timeline. We understand that this is a very aggressive timeline. So we're at approximately three months, a little north of that, and you're saying about four months is typical. What, where, where does that time fall? Where does the extra time fall within that timeline? Does it bring the recruitment process to give that?
Yes, sir. We would probably leave the job open under normal circumstances, 45 days. That would be about 15 days. We might even spread, have an extra week there. If you note, we're, we're suggesting to open it up next week, we would close it at the first of June and then meet with you right after that so you could get started interviewing. We would generally have a next, extra week, maybe two in there as well. So that's why I say we're probably, generally, we're about a four month, sometimes it might be five months if it falls over the Christmas break or something like that. It can be done in this time period, but, but we, we have to hit those markers pretty close. I, I think regardless of whether you choose us or another firm, to get there by August the 3rd, have someone on the job, you're gonna have to stay somewhere pretty close to that. Might have, might vary, just a few days, one way or the other. But I sat down and just tried to back up, think about where y'all might want to be with a new superintendent. And of course, I would always say, if I were a new superintendent coming in, I want to be there when the kids and the teachers come back. So I wanted to work back and think, and think that way and think, well, what, what have we gotta do and where we gotta, gotta be in order to accomplish that goal?
Mike, can I, it's one thing you will hear Mike and I say multiple times, your timeline is a tool, it is not a master. The timeline gives you some structure and some discipline if you go through the process. And frankly, some of the time periods are gonna be dictated by law, like the 21-day periods. The ultimate goal for the board is not to say, well, I don't feel ready to make a decision, but gosh, the timeline says we have to do it, so I guess we just have to do it. If, if you ever get to a point where you don't feel ready for the next step, the timeline always needs to yield to the needs of the board to make the right decision. So think of your timeline as a tool that gives you some structure. It is not your master.
We would never.
So real, real quick in saying that, back to the recruitment process. So if you found your guy, I mean, within the few weeks and you've got a bunch of outstanding candidates, that's what typically would reduce this timeline if, if you got to get it.
You broke up on me just a little bit there, but the timeline would, we could, would reduce it by, we would be recruiting a little longer. We're gonna be, we're gonna make this fast one. And, and truth of it is, as David said, we're pretty far along on some other searches. I would say the Lake Travis District is, is an outstanding district, very similar to your district. We already know who some pretty strong candidates are there. Obviously, they're running a little ahead of you, but their, their pool is gonna be strong. I think your pool is going to be very strong. And I think people, I, I'll tell you what I think is gonna make yours a little easier. If you had wanted people to apply by May 1st, some districts, the optics of that, given the COVID-19 virus, that would be a little difficult to ask someone to leave. And I know Bo Rees had to struggle with this and I know y'all have had to struggle with it. But I think the timing is going to be better in June. And if you can, if we can, we can get the recruiting done, we can get candidates established by the end of May 1st of June and then be, have you ready to be interviewing in June? I think the climate will be a lot better for you making that decision at that time as well. And of course, obviously, you're gonna get a lot of our intense efforts for the next 35, 40 days recruiting people.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to say, I think most of us recognize the importance of focusing on getting the right person. You, I think David said earlier, seven to 10 years, or maybe you said, Mike, seven to 10 years. Seven to 10 years is not worth out waiting, you know, out waiting one or two weeks, three or four weeks.
Absolutely, I agree.
The clarion message I've gotten from y'all today is, you know, do it right, do what we gotta do to get the right people in there.
And, and we think we can help you do that, but if we didn't think you were ready or we didn't think we had the right people, we'll tell you. And if you tell us, hey, you don't have the group here, this is not the group we think we need to pick from, then our obligation is to go get them, is, is go do some more work for you. We're not there until you feel comfortable. We will never encourage you to say, well, make a decision because you're running out of time. We want you to make a decision because you feel great about it.
Did, did anybody else have any other questions? Or Mike and David? Well, I really appreciate you guys coming and giving your presentation to us today. I think that we'll probably decide today, would be my guess. Of course, we'll, we'll talk after the meeting. And so in any event, we'll know very shortly whether we selected you or not.
Appreciate you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate getting an opportunity to visit with you.
Thank you, appreciate it. So, Bo, are we, do we go into closed session to make, to talk about this further or do we stay in open session for that? Do you know?
You can go into closed session to talk about it, but, or you can talk about it in, in public.
Yeah, I would say we probably should go into closed session. At this point, we can talk as a group and then, and then come out and discuss what our decision is. Are y'all good with that? Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead and do that. Well, at this point, we'll go ahead and close the meeting and go into closed session and then we'll come out and discuss what our decision is. We're gonna go ahead and open back up the open session. And do I have any motions from the board?
I'll move to approve Thompson and Horton as our new superintendent.
Second?
Second.
Gary, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Any opposed? Was that David?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, the motion passes. And so I guess, Bo, are you gonna have Debbie help us coordinate with them on the timeline and what they need to do with us in the meetings and stuff?
Yes, yes, you'll be hearing from them, no doubt, probably by Monday at least on timeline and different things. Through, most likely, we'll coordinate through you and Debbie with Dr. Moses or, or Mr. Thompson.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, guys, for meeting on a Friday. And thank you all for, for being attentive and, and all that. This is gonna be a lot of work over the next month or two. I think we can do it. We're gonna come out really well on the other side, but I really appreciate it, guys. This is gonna be really good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good job, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.